Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, March first, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is approximately seven oh five. My name is Richard Dorsey, designated at this hearing for Montgomery County Department of Transportation. Here with me this evening to conduct this public hearing is Robert Gonzalez, manager of the sidewalk program with Montgomery County Department of Transportation, Division of Transportation Engineering. Also in attendance is Rick Holly, field supervisor, Juan Beras, construction representative, and Ms. Lori Main, planning specialist, all with the sidewalk program. Robert Gonzalez will be providing the information and details regarding to the proposed project. Thank you for joining us in this virtual platform. Although we have held quite a few virtual hearings, we are still learning, so please bear with us if we encounter any technical difficulties this evening. Please note that tonight's hearing is being recorded. A link to recording will be posted on the sidewalk program's website by five P M tomorrow. A link to the sidewalk program website is provided on your screen and is at the top of the chat box on the virtual platform. You may also notice that the video camera, your video camera is turned off by default this evening. To reduce the bandwidth of the meeting and maximize the technical efficiency, we will, we request that you, excuse me, please do not turn on your video camera. Likewise, your microphones have been muted. Once the testimony portion of this hearing begins, those who have signed up to testify will be called on and asked to unmute when it is your turn to speak. Once invited to unmute, you can unmute yourself by clicking the microphone icon at the bottom left of your screen. If you have not signed up to advance in advance to testify but wish to do so, please raise your hand by clicking on the reaction icon at the bottom of your screen and then clicking Raise Your Hand. If you are joining via telephone only, you may raise your hand by pressing star nine on your telephone keypad and star six to unmute yourself once invited to unmute. Please wait until the testimony portion of this hearing to raise your hand. You may raise your hand at any time during the testimony portion. We will call on you to provide your oral testimony and unmute your microphone. When is your turn to speak? Written testimonies and comments will be submitted as well and will be considered with the same weight as oral testimonies. If time allows, following the testimony portion of the hearing, we will hold a question and answer session. You may raise your hand and ask questions, or you may, you're welcome to type in your questions in the chat box, the icon for which is at the bottom of your screen. Tonight's hearing is being held pursuant section forty-nine fifty-three of Montgomery County Code. The purpose of this public hearing is to contain testimony regarding the potential project to assist in determining if the project is in the best interest of the public and whether the project should be authorized for construction in its entirety or any portion thereof. This form allows you to provide testimony either in support or opposition of the project. Public comments should be focused entirely on the project, which is the topic of this discussion. All interested persons are entitled to be heard during this hearing. However, this testimony portion of this hearing is not a form for dialogue, question and answer, or cross-examination. Please direct your remarks to the specific project that is the subject of this hearing. If comments stray in an area unrelated to this project, I will ask you to refocus your comments to the subject project. Following the conclusion of the public hearing, the record will remain open for four weeks to allow any person who is unable to attend this hearing an opportunity to have their written testimony and comments included in the public record and fully considered. The official closing date by which all comments and testimonies must be received is Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, at five P M. Submissions may be emailed or sent via regular mail and must be received or postmarked by the close of the hearing record. Please be sure to provide your name and property address on your submission. Registered submissions will be considered with the same weight as oral testimonies. Submissions should be sent to Ms. Lori Main, whose contact information is posted at the top of this evening's chat as well as on the screen. After the hearing is concluded, the record will be officially closed. I, as the hearing officer, will review and weigh all information submitted into the public record and make a recommendation to the Director of the Department of Transportation, Christopher Kaufman, for his final decision as to whether the project has been shown to be in the best interest of the public and whether to authorize the project as proposed or any portion thereof. And now to discuss the sidewalk proposal for the Kenwood Park community, I'll give you Robert Gonzalez.
Good evening, Messrs. Dorsey, Holly, and Barrios, Ms. Main, ladies and gentlemen. The subject of this evening's public hearing is to consider a proposal to construct a five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk with a zero-three-foot-wide buffering green space along the following road, roadways in the Kenwood Park community. The south even-numbered side of Durbin Road from Bradley Boulevard to Hopewood Street, the north odd-numbered side of Lennox Road from Millwood Road to Whittier Boulevard, the west even-numbered side of Millwood Road from Plainview Road to Goldsboro Road, the west even-numbered side of Ken Hill Road from Durbin Road to High Borough Drive, the northeast odd-numbered side of High Borough Road from Ken Hill Road to Whittier Drive. For your convenience, we have posted a few displays that aid in the visual description of this project. The displays will also be posted on the sidewalk program website by five P M tomorrow, March second, two thousand twenty-three. They are as follows. Display A one. Display A one is an aerial project vicinity map of the proposed sidewalks in the Kenwood Park community. The map shows the location of the proposed sidewalks relative to schools, places of worship, and other pedestrian generators such as Walt Whitman High School, Whittier Woods Local Park, Jerome M. Marco Stadium, and Whitman Track, River Road Unitarian Universalist Congregation, the Radner School, Kenwood Country Club, the existing network of sidewalks, as well as the public transportation amenities. Although not shown on this map, the sidewalks will provide safer access to amenities and pedestrian attractions located along Wilson Lane, River Road, and Goldsboro Road. These include the Thomas W. Pyle Middle School, the Landon School, the Barn Alumni Athletic Center, Amha Torah Congregation, Camp Gan Israel Bethesda, Bethesda Community School, Penny Girls Foundation, Chabad of Bethesda, Bethesda Preparatory Preschool, the Garder'd School of Bethesda, and Saint Bartholomew Church, as well as public transportation facilities and the existing network of sidewalks. The proposed sidewalks are shown in red and the existing sidewalks in blue. The total length of the new sidewalk construct, construction is proposed to be approximately nine thousand eight hundred and forty-four total linear feet. In display B, a typical section of the proposed sidewalk on Durbin Road on which Montgomery County has sixty feet of public right-of-way. The roadway is twenty-six feet wide, leaving thirty-four feet of available right-of-way. Thus, there are seventeen feet of available public right-of-way on each side of Durbin Road. Display C, a typical section of the proposed sidewalk on Lennox Road on which Montgomery County has sixty feet of public right-of-way. The roadway is twenty-six feet wide, leaving thirty feet of available right-of-way. Thus, there are seventeen feet of available public right-of-way on each side of Lennox Road. Display D, a typical section of the proposed sidewalk on Millwood Road on which Montgomery County has sixty feet of public right-of-way. The roadway is twenty-six feet wide, leaving thirty-four feet of available right-of-way. Thus, there are seventeen feet of available public right-of-way on each side of Millwood Road. Display E, a typical section of proposed sidewalk on Ken Hill Road on which Montgomery County has sixty feet of public right-of-way. The roadway is twenty-six feet wide, leaving thirty-four feet of available right-of-way. Thus, there are seventeen feet of available public right-of-way on each side of Ken Hill Road. Display F, a typical section of proposed sidewalk on High Borough Drive on which Montgomery County has sixty feet of public right-of-way. The roadway is twenty-six feet wide, leaving thirty-four feet of available right-of-way. Thus, there are seventeen feet of available public right-of-way on each side of High Borough Drive. Project justification. Montgomery County D O T evaluates your request for pedestrian facilities based on their ability to serve public use and enhance public safety. The main goal of installing sidewalk is to remove pedestrians from the path of vehicular traffic and create a separation between the pedestrian and the roadway. Sidewalk installation likewise is a key component of the county's climate action plan, setting up the infrastructure to allow pedestrians to safely walk, separated from traffic to short-distance destination as well as to public transportation for longer trips. The new sidewalks in the Kenwood Park community will remove pedestrians and disabled persons from the roadway and oncoming vehicular traffic. The sidewalks will establish safer access to numerous aforementioned pedestrian generators as displayed on display A one, as well as all areas of the community. Pedestrian safety will be improved for the entire community. Tree removal and replacement. This project originally involved a removal of one hundred thirty-five trees to facilitate the construction of the sidewalk. An additional thirteen trees were slated for removal due to poor condition. I've authorized, however, the use of alternative materials as well as alternative designs and construction to be implemented. If approved, in an effort to save money of the trees slated for removal, in light of the new material and designs, the county arborist has prepared a revised tree report, which was finalized and placed in the email to all the project mailing list yesterday, February twenty-eight. Where previously one hundred forty-eight trees were slated for removal, now only fifteen trees are slated for removal, eight of which are being removed because they are in poor declining condition. You will note that air excavation is prescribed to save the trees. The act of air excavation will allow us to inspect the roots and determine which material we will use to construct the sidewalk. The trees for which air excavation is recommended will not be removed. Three trees will be planted for each one tree removed, or forty-five trees will be planted back into the public rights-of-way. Placement and species of the new trees will be selected by the county's arborist, though you are welcome to submit a request for your preferred species. If the proposed sidewalks are ultimately approved, residents will be given instructions for requesting their preferred replacement tree species. The revised and original tree protection reports can be downloaded from Montgomery County D O T's project website. Copies of the original Kenwood Park Community Tree Protection Report were mailed to residents with the sidewalk proposal on or about January twenty, two thousand twenty-three. Costs and assessments. The estimated cost for installing Kenwood Park Community sidewalks is approximately one point two million dollars. Estimated costs include construction, inspection, and administrative costs. Funding for this project will be provided under the county's sidewalk program, C I P number five oh six seven four seven. There are no properties considered to be specially benefited by the proposed improvement. Therefore, no properties are expected to be assessed. As previously discussed, several exhibits are incorporated into the public record binder for your information and consideration. The exhibits include, one, Office of Management and Budget Sidewalk Program Minor Projects, P five or six seven four seven. Two is the project vicinity map. Three is the public right-of-way construction impacts. Four is the arborist's original and revised tree protection report. Five is Montgomery County's press release circulated and published on Twitter, Reddit, Post Social, Mastodon, and Nextdoor social media sites on February sixth and February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, Washington Times Legal Advertisement published on February twenty-second and twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, and highlighted in the My M C Daily Newsletter. Number six is the written testimony to date supporting all or a portion of the proposed sidewalks. Seven is testimony to date opposing sidewalk installation. Eight is a list of attendees to be added following this hearing. Nine is the hearing transcript also to be added following the hearing. Project-related data and files can be downloaded from the sidewalk program's website. The files will continue to be available to the public until the record for this public hearing is officially closed on March twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-three. If the proposed sidewalk is approved, Montgomery County D O T will utilize a work order contract currently in place with the Division of Transportation Engineering to construct the sidewalk. If approved and authorized for construction, we anticipate construction during the late fall of two thousand twenty-three. The construction of all proposed sidewalks is anticipated to take approximately eight to ten weeks, weather permitting, if authorized as presented. As previously stated, here with us this evening is Mr. Rick Holly, field supervisor, and Mr. Juan Barrios, construction representative of the sidewalk program. They will be available after testimony portion of this hearing to answer any questions regarding the construction aspects of this project. And now I turn the meeting back to, over to Mr. Dorsey.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. We will now hear testimony from those in attendance who wish to testify. If you have not signed up to testify but decide that you would like to, please click the reaction icon on the bottom menu bar and click Raise Your Hand to Raise Your Hand. Alternatively, if you've joined the meeting by phone, you may dial star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand. Once you are invited to speak and unmute yourself, please unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon at the bottom left of your screen or by pressing star six on your telephone keypad. Please clearly provide your name and address for the record prior to beginning your testimony. In addition, you may submit your full testimony in writing. These submissions will be fully considered, along with the oral testimonies heard this evening. Please reserve all questions for the question and answer session following the testimony portion of this hearing. We will begin with those who have signed up in advance to testify at this evening's hearing. Because of a significant interest in this project and the number of attendees at this hearing who wish to speak, it will be necessary to enforce a three-minute time limit for every testimony. I'm requesting all presentations taking longer than three minutes be summarized so as to comply with the time restrictions. We may provide your full testimony, you may provide your full testimony in writing for submitting to the record. These submissions will be fully considered, along with all testimonies heard today. Again, please be sure to announce your name and property address before providing your testimony. We'll accept testimonies now. Lori, can you bring it?
Yes, thank you. First, we will hear from William Negley. William, can you unmute yourself?
Good evening. My name is William Negley. I am joined by my wife Kelly and our six-year-old daughter Mabel and three-year-old son Albert. We live at fifty-six thirty-two Bradley Boulevard. While our street address is Bradley, our front door faces Durbin, something which has caused no shortage of confusion for food delivery drivers. I want to emphasize two unique elements about our home as part of this discussion. First, I suspect there is no one on this call whose home is positioned to be impacted by the county in the coming years more than us. The Bradley Boulevard Road project will impact us on Bradley's side, and of course, this project will impact us on the Durbin side, with ADA wheelchair ramps planned to support both. Second, because of the position of our home and my office facing Durbin, I stare at the Bradley-Durbin bus stop all day. Lastly, as I suspect everyone on this call is aware, we have numerous very serious mature trees on our property. We were disappointed when we purchased the home to have to take down ten trees. While you may ask if we have to take them down because they were dead or dying, and there was risk of limbs falling on my toddler children. I would never prioritize a tree over my children. So I can speak to three things: significant county impact on my property, my trees, and while I cannot speak to the safety of the roads deeper in this neighborhood, I can speak to what I see all day at this intersection. What I can say is it would be incredibly irresponsible to not implement some protected sidewalk program in at least this initial block. I watch children and adults alike who are out of countless Montgomery County public transportation buses and school buses onto this intersection every day with quite literally zero protection. Similarly, I watch cars whip around the blind corner from Bradley onto Durbin, and workers and trucks park on both sides of Bradley, eating breakfast and lunch. And I personally observed a number of accidents as drivers rolled back down the hill on Durbin or tend to turn onto Bradley with, again, no protection. Meanwhile, on a personal level, we have loved walking the streets of the neighborhood with our children and Bernie's Mountain Dog, with and our Bernie's Mountain Dog. Unfortunately, the hill with heavy flow of traffic coming into Bradley and Durbin, and my children's desire to partake in the indulgence of riding a scooter or a bike has made for a number of close calls with cars on Durbin. This is to say nothing of mom or dad unloading the car with groceries while controlling two toddlers with limited protection between themselves and a busy street. For all these reasons, I strongly support protected pedestrian walkway at minimum in this initial stretch of Durbin. Finally, I would appoint everyone to the Montgomery County Pedestrian Master Plan expected to be adopted shortly, specifically Recommendation B one B, and I quote, "Today, public engagement around sidewalk projects tends to be centered around whether a sidewalk's project should be constructed, and some important projects do not advance due to public concern. The public process around sidewalk construction should be..."
That is time, I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll hear from Valbana Karimi.
Hi, everyone. I appreciate this hearing, and I'm open to hear what the majority of the community will say. I've lived in this community for almost ten years. My kids have been taking the bus daily, and it's overall been pretty safe. I understand that the cost to build these sidewalks is pretty significant. I believe there has been some burden with the new construction on our streets, which at times makes it somewhat unsafe for the people to walk on the roads, but I personally feel that there should be, I guess, more study into this, and I think that the money can be used more wisely towards other things that our community needs. I live very close to Goldsboro and River Roads, and it's very dangerous on certain streets, not necessarily on the streets that are currently picked. If the county is willing to put money into this, I would think it would be more wisely used on the streets that are more dangerous, number one. Number two, I think it would be better used if, for example, if the county helps us to update the electric poles. Many of those are above ground and a threat during the storms for our kids and our families and our properties. So while I understand why this proposal is coming to place, I personally feel that our neighborhood is pretty safe, and streets like Bradley, which the gentleman before me just talked about, are more important than some of the streets currently proposed. Bradley and Goldsboro and a few other streets that have heavier traffic, that would make sense to me. I personally am not in agreement with the proposal the way it is. I think we need to explore it further and prioritize where it's needed most. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Roy Niedermayer.
Thank you. Excuse me, I am under the weather a little bit. It may be hard to understand, but I live at sixty-one twenty-eight Durbin Road and have been a resident of Kenwood Park for over forty years. First, let me say that, to be clear, I oppose the adoption and the implementation of the Kenwood Park sidewalk proposal, and I would adopt the substantive objections and the opposition of others who are going to speak on the basis of environmental or other aspects. And for the record preliminarily, I must object to the hearing at this time because the department has modified the plan which was presented several weeks earlier, only last night, less than twenty-four hours before this hearing, and this does not give anyone, much less other members of the community, the opportunity for due process by way of reading, reviewing the plan, and making appropriate comments to the new upgraded plan. Also, let me say that, as I've said forth in more detail in my written testimony, the processes being pursued here and the regulatory process, the means by which being pursued are both illegal and unconstitutional under the Maryland Constitution and the Charter of Montgomery County. That is because the delegation of the initiation of installation sidewalks and the designation of where those sidewalks will be installed is created and by a requister, and those requesters are private persons. This violates the law of Maryland on the non-delegation doctrine, which says that it is not constitutional or legal to have a private person cause the implementation and exercise a governmental decision-making process. There are case laws that I've cited in my testimony. There's been a recognition of this by the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission and the Montgomery County Council as a planning board in the master plan for pedestrians that is being now under discussion in Montgomery County. The process that the Department of Transportation is used is defective, and it's been recognized by those other agencies who have said that the process should be data-driven, and here there has been no studies of any sort, and that an approach to sidewalk construction that relies on community requests does not address those locations with the greatest need. A data-driven approach rather than reliance on platitudes and requesters designation is now being under consideration by the Montgomery County Council as the planning board and the Park and Planning Commission. There will be a hearing on March twenty-third regarding that. Therefore, finally, in all consideration, this hearing and a decision on the Kenwood Plan should...
Sir, that's time.
...because there's going to be a hearing on a master plan.
Sir, that's time. Thank you. Sir, that's time. Thank you. Okay, next we will hear from Mahesh Volnaki. Mahesh Volnaki. Okay, how about Anuj Kapoor?
Hi, everyone. This is Anuj Kapoor, joined by my wife Maddie. We live at five-eight-zero-nine Tanglewood. We just wanted to provide some informal commentary. We've been members of the broader community for over thirty-five years, our parents for nearly sixty years. We grew up in the Huntington Parkway neighborhood just down the road. As many of you know, they have abundance of sidewalks throughout the neighborhood that allowed us as children to venture out from a young age, play, meet friends at the park with limited concern or worry from our parents. Let me be clear that with a three-and-a-half-year-old and a young infant, at this point, we do not feel comfortable allowing our children, as they grow, to walk the streets of the neighborhood. And further, we do not feel comfortable, as adults, walking with a stroller or with our dog in this neighborhood due to the high amount of traffic, the danger caused to pedestrians throughout the neighborhood, both at times with peak traffic during construction and otherwise. So we are pleased and encouraged by the proposal presented and believe it will enhance the condition of our neighborhood and the safety of all pedestrians. I am surprised at the suggestion that protecting perceived property values, protecting perceived aesthetics, that prioritizing trees should be prioritized more than the safety and welfare of our community members and our children. And I don't mean to suggest that those things are not important or that we should not consider the impact to the environment because we strongly do support finding the best way and the most thoughtful way to avoid harming the environment in this process. However, in our minds, it is of the utmost importance to protect the members of this community and to avoid any future situation with pedestrians, with children in this neighborhood. Recently, Huntington Parkway, the Huntington Terrace neighborhood, added even more sidewalks. And one thing, though this is not scientific, we have observed and our parents have observed, the community come to life. More pedestrians are out with their childrens, with their pets. The community has grown with its children around Bradley Hills, and we've seen more community events pop up. So I do believe that there are other benefits to sidewalks other than just the safety aspect, though, again, first and foremost, that's what's important to us. We also just wanted to extend our gratitude to all the members of the community. You know, this is a hot-button issue, and perhaps even more importantly, the members of the Department of Transportation and all the county officials who are supporting this effort.
Sir, that's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll hear from Eddie Fernandez.
Hi, there's... I actually did not have a... I'm sorry if I erroneously submitted for this, but I do live in Hybor Drive and sixty-one twenty-one, and we've been part of the community now for close to a decade. And my concerns are not just about the trees, but about the safety, and the general safety issues that we see are not the lack of a sidewalk, but the high speed rate at which cars travel down our wide roads. We are blessed to have very wide roads. And recently, we moved into these communities because we felt we could walk safely because of this. But however, that has a second impact of high speeders. I do not see any data about speed control within our community. I also do not know of any incidents happening of any pedestrians within our community. So I think that there is a happy medium, perhaps considering having sidewalks with narrower streets that protects the environment, trees, provides some narrowing of the streets to reduce speed as well as provide the accessway for pedestrians to walk. So I do not see the county having provided that as a as a consideration, and I would consider that because that really would provide a sidewalks were not opposed to them. It would narrow the streets, control speed limits without having to add speed bumps and everything else. Cars are going to continue to speed. Your kids are going to continue to ride their bikes in the streets and run into the street accidentally, and it only takes a blimp of a second to hit one of these kids. So if you are concerned about your kids playing, they're not going to be playing on the sidewalks. They're going to be playing on the streets. And it is limiting this speed on our streets that really matters. And I think we can achieve that with a better consideration. I also think that the street choices are a little bit interesting in terms of the side of the streets, right? Why put a sidewalk on the opposite side of where the bus stops rather than where the bus stops? It doesn't seem like there has been the proper study of where this sidewalks should go. That would be my end of my discussion. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll hear from Pete Sather. Pete Sather. Okay, Lauren Saunders.
Thank you. I'm Lauren Saunders, and I live at seven thousand Millwood Road, corner of Lennox. I oppose the proposal. We have lived here for twenty years. Our children were five and eight years old when we moved here and went to Bradley, Pyle, and Whitman. We have always felt safe walking around the neighborhood. I respect the views of those who want sidewalks. This proposal is a crude proposal but is not tied to actual traffic or pedestrian needs, and the county did not give us the respect of notice or community input about the proposal. The initial tree report was done in 2020 when serious work began, and not a word of it was breathed to all of us. We spent tens of thousands of dollars landscaping our yard last year, which we went on and done, others installed dog fences and other landscaping. The original proposal made no effort to preserve trees. There are many ways that sidewalks can be installed while preserving trees. We appreciate that there is now a revised report, but I think the initial slide may have given the impression that trees will not be removed if there's aeration. I don't think that is accurate. I am one of the few people who actually has a chance to see that report. It says that sidewalks will be constructed around the other trees if it avoids root damage. So our reading is that ninety or more trees are still at risk of removal. We walked the neighborhood last night and tried to look at some of the trees and how they were being treated. I don't have time to go into the details, but there are a lot of questions about how deeply into yard sidewalks could go, whether they're kind of curb-helter-skelter ways, and lots of questions that make us think that the end result may not really be a whole lot different. I hope I'm wrong about that. But it just highlights of having this at the very last minute where this hearing doesn't make a lot of sense because we don't even really know what we're talking about. The revised proposal still does not take a holistic look at how best to improve safety in the neighborhood, which is not necessarily only about sidewalks. Even minor street alterations, like allowing the curb to come out around a tree, would not only save a tree but help to slow down traffic. I can tell you, living at the corner of Millwood and Lennox, we have numerous times had cars drive over the curb onto our property and plow down the vegetation we used to have there. So slowing down traffic is really the most important thing, and a more holistic approach can enhance safety in a much better way as well as preserve our important environment. So again, I'm upset at the last-minute notice of things and the approach here. We do appreciate the input we've gotten from the county. One last point I'd note is that of that the replacement trees in fiscal year 2022, you produced a document that showed forty-seven trees...
That's time. I'm sorry.
...replaced.
Thank you. Let's see. Next, we'll hear from Mikhail Adamantydi.
Hi, thank you. Thanks to MTDOC for hosting this event. I wanted to voice my strong support for the sidewalk plan in the Kenwood Park area, which will help improve safety and mobility. I think everybody in the vicinity would benefit greatly, and I urge Montgomery County to proceed, not only to proceed, but actually to expand it to include more streets, to improve the safety of our community. Other streets in our area would benefit, particularly ones closer to the local schools. Sidewalks are imperative for a safe, walkable community. They're... The leading cause of pedestrian accidents with cars is the lack of sidewalks, which is entirely preventable. This neighborhood, as currently constructed, is very dangerous to walk in and to drive in, quite frankly. And I fear when I drive, and I don't walk often because of the risk. There are cars parked on the side, there are cars going in both directions, and to expect pedestrians and cars to navigate one right of way concurrently, I think, is absurd. Sidewalks benefit everyone in the community, particularly the elderly, who are at highest risk of accidents. Also, there are countless students here in our area. There are three thousand five hundred students at Whitman and Pyle High School, which does not count the thousands of local kids in elementary schools who use buses or walk to school that would benefit greatly. I have two kids in high school who often tell me they are fearful walking to school, which is nearly two blocks away as I live on Plainview Road, and they have to navigate the curb, park cars, and they feel uncomfortable. And I would urge the county to expand the plan, actually. There are streets closer to women that would also benefit. There was a study done in 2019, and they were by MC, Montgomery County Atlas, and over four hundred pedestrians were observed at a particular intersection of Whittier and Plainview Road, and I think more sidewalks on those on those local streets close to women would improve safety further. With regards to trees, trees can be replaced, and I support other replacement of those trees, and I urge Montgomery County to put safety ahead of trees. I'd like to thank Montgomery County for this opportunity, and again, I strongly support the sidewalk plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Achilles Adamantydi.
Sorry, that's my son, who I jointly voiced his concerns.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we'll hear from Michael Stroud. Michael Stroud. Okay, Carly Two.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I live with my family in the greater community. My three-year-old is in the women's high school pipeline currently, and I think this plan, as I last reviewed it in preparation for this meeting creativity, someone said that we were blessed with very wide roads. I think we are cursed by very wide roads and see sidewalks as an absolute need for the community, but I don't think it has to be at the detriment of losing trees. I think that there is an opportunity to look at the road width and take back some of that asphalt for safer sidewalks that would also then create some traffic calming in our neighborhoods and make them safer. I believe that there is nothing really more important than the autonomy of being able to move outside in the world, outside of a vehicle for mental and physical health, especially for children. It hits me right in the heart when I hear that there are high schoolers that are fearful of walking to school. Our children should be able to walk and ride their bikes to school. My son loves riding his bike, and let me tell you, as someone who lives in a neighborhood with very few sidewalks, nothing is more stressful than taking my three-year-old for a walk or a bike ride in my neighborhood without sidewalks, especially with the size and scale of modern SUVs. And I'm at the point where I can only control what I can control, and I can voice my opinion on the infant structure here. So thank you for allowing me to do that today.
Thank you, Carly. Next, we'll hear from Joshua Hart.
Thank you very much. My name is Joshua Hart. I live at sixty-eight oh eight Granby, and I am saying, coming to express my absolute support for the sidewalk project. I wish you were including on some more streets, for example, Tanglewood on the left side where Pyle and Bradley Hills buses go through. I think a lot of concerns, unfortunately, having dealt with projects like this in other neighborhoods are from people who are either older or have children or older and aren't quite thinking about the future. I know they like their trees the way they are, but I think they might not find things will be that same way in another ten years or so. And also, it's part of the reason for this is not just about traffic that people are talking about. It's the number of cars and people parking in bizarre ways. I've seen over twenty teardowns in the four years I've lived here, and when you see seven vehicles, several which are incredibly high in a row, I would never feel comfortable walking, have my kindergartner walk by himself or even a few years around all of them to get to the school bus stop. And lastly, I would just say in terms of statistics or data, the only statistic I know that we need these sidewalks is December twelfth, 2019, when a poor student from Bradley Hills Elementary died in a pedestrian fatality. From then on, while I knew I supported sidewalks, I knew they were be a very important part of our community and were desperately needed. And lastly, I know people like their trees. I like my trees too, but a lot of them are dead. And again, if this is in public space, you put a fancy fence or driveway there, I mean, sorry, you're just out of luck. That's not really your property. So that's all I have to say for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh. Next, we'll hear from Veronica Olenek. Veronica Olenek? Okay, how about Lillian Klein Abington? Lillian Abington? Diana Huffman? Diana Huffman? Leonard Bechick?
Here I am. I am Leonard Bechick and reside at sixty-three twenty-one Lennox Road. My property is not affected by the proposed sideways construction, and I favor sidewalks where they are needed. But I'm opposed to the proposed projects because of three reasons. They are the result of planning and location criteria which are wholly unrelated to pertinent public safety considerations, such as vehicle, biking, and pedestrian traffic flow. They are limited only to locations that have been recommended or requested by members of the public. The whole stretch from the whole stretch of Kenhill from Hybor to Durban, some two thousand five hundred sixty-eight feet, requested by one person. My correspondence with Ms. Main, which would be placed in the record, she admitted two things, that steadying traffic volume would not influence the decision regarding sidewalks, and that when I said, why haven't certain segments been extended, given the fatal accident to that little girl, why is Radnor not extended? Why is the proposed Lennox Road sidewalk not extended to Radnor? And the response was, that's because it wasn't requested. This approach is now going to be discarded. Under the new approach that's been in preparation for four years, the new master plan says key action B-one, pivot the annual sideways program from a reactive requested-driven process to an equitable data-driven... to an equitable drought data-driven process. It then, the plan proceeds to note, as Bill Bonner said, an approach to sideways construction that relies upon community requests does not necessarily address those locations with the greatest need. Using a database approach to allocating the limited resources of the annual sideways program will ensure that the highest priority connections are made and that resources are expended equitably. So what is the sensible thing to do? Is to place the current Kenwood Park plan in suspense until the issues of sideways can be addressed through a newly adopted data-driven plan, which will look on what traffic is and will decide which are the best in places to build a sidewalk, not depending on what a member of the public says. The law is clear. The governmental powers may not be lawfully delegated to private citizens, and this non-delegation doctrine has long been the war of law of Maryland in a separate series of decisions by our highest court. For example, it is clear that while citizens may petition for the creation and the boundaries of a construction project, the final decision, including its boundaries, must rest within the sound discretion of governmental officials. Otherwise, the action is unlawful delegation. Let's take in.
That's time, sir. I'm sorry, Leonard, that's time.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll hear from Paula Wyman.
Hi, I'm Paula Wyman. I'm at sixty-one twenty-one Shady Oak Lane. I'm the author of a forthcoming book about native plant restoration. Montgomery County pays residents to replace concrete with permeable pavers or with native plants to improve water quality and reduce stormwater runoff. The county wants residents to undertake such product projects, but they haven't studied similar approaches to this project. Instead, the county proposes adding two miles of sidewalk, impacting more than one hundred and fifty mature trees and shrubs and other plants. The county has done no study of pedestrian needs or traffic calming here and no environmental study on increased stormwater runoff, reduction of tree canopy, or related issues in Kenwood Park. We've been told such studies are not required. Just because study is not required by law doesn't mean it isn't necessary. We need data. Luckily, there's plenty of data about trees. Large trees store the most carbon. It's removed from the air, reducing pollution for decades and even centuries. Mature trees take more than a generation to grow. The county proposes planting three trees somewhere in place of each tree that's removed, but to replicate the carbon benefits of one large tree with a twenty-five-inch diameter, you'd have to plant one hundred and eighty-nine two-inch diameter saplings in its place. Trees combat stormwater runoff. The addition of two miles of sidewalk would create an additional thirty-one thousand gallons of runoff for every inch of rainfall. That means increased pollutants entering our streams. Intense rain events in the region have increased by as much as twenty percent. Mature tree coverage prevents the urban heat island effect. In neighborhoods with more mature trees, the temperature is as much as seventy-seven degrees cooler. Trees support native wildlife and biodiversity at a critical time. I'll use one tree species impacted by the proposal as an example. The oak is a keystone species. It's critical to the healthy functioning of an entire ecosystem. It supports over five hundred species of caterpillar. Other trees on the list support hundreds of caterpillars as well. They are crucial to the diets of baby birds. Without them, no birds. A single group of nestlings can eat thousands of caterpillars a day. Caterpillars that don't get eaten become pollinators, butterflies, ensuring the growth of our native plants. Installing pavement under a tree's canopy rather than plants has an impact. When caterpillars preparing to change into butterflies, many that live in trees drop to the ground, burrow in the soil. If there is concrete under those branches, those caterpillars will die. Oaks are critical for watershed management. One oak's canopy can intercept up to three thousand gallons of rain per year, cleaning the water of pollutants. There's a common misperception that a tree's roots always end at the drip line, the end of its branches. In fact, they can extend much further, and oak's roots are at least three times the size of its canopy. That's why it's such a good water manager. In light of stormwater management, biodiversity, and carbon impacts, no decision can be responsibly made until the county has collected data specific to Kenwood Park to help us understand and address these impacts. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Um, next we will hear from Michael Harrison.
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, Michael Harrison at five eight two eight Tangwood Drive. Thanks for your time and attention to the community response. I am fundamentally opposed to the current plan, including the proposed revision. It requires unnecessary destruction of trees and property and is not adequately planned. My counterproposal is simple. Wherever there are trees or other obstructions to a walkway on the current yards, put the sidewalk in the street. When there are no such obstructions, put the sidewalk on the current yard and create a parking bay. Don't allow parking outside of these bays on the side of the street that has the sidewalk. This arrangement will provide us with the needed sidewalks, reduce the width of roads, and thereby slow down traffic and save all the trees. If the cost is greater than what can be afforded in a single budget year, my proposed plan can be executed over two or more years. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, next we'll hear from Ronan Roy.
Hi, this is Ron Roy. Fifty-seven hundred block of Durban along the Durban corridor, planned sidewalk project, eighteen-year resident of Kenwood Park, raised uh kids from uh four years old to eighteen in this neighborhood. Uh, I preface my remarks by saying in general, I'm a sidewalk person. Um, I'm also an interested party since it would go by my house, the proposed project. Um, in this case, I am opposed to the proposed sidewalk corridor project specifically along the Durban corridor, and I don't speak to any other parts of the project along the other streets, and I um, and I take it under advisement, all the comments that we've heard from other residents so far. Um, one thing I would point out is that there is a perception of safety, and a lot of that is psychological and personal. My only experience is from my personal data of having lived here, walked here for eighteen years with kids, strollers, or not strollers, but with preschoolers and with dogs, is that there may be perception of safety, but I haven't observed personally or anecdotally any any serious incidents with regard to safety in that time. The second point is to the extent that there is a proposed sidewalk along Durban corridor, in general, not opposed to the idea, however, regarding the uh the uh bus stop at Durban and Bradley, there is an existing sidewalk that extends from that bus stop, and it would make sense to the extent that they were to propose a sidewalk, to continue it along the north side of Durban Road, not opposed to the idea of having something uh next to the gentleman's premises on the other side of the road. The most dangerous part of this neighborhood is the intersection of Bradley and Durban, where cars are constantly turning and where there are accidents. To the extent that a sidewalk would be built, and it would encourage extra pedestrian traffic to and from Bradley, including crossing Bradley, it's like leading lambs to the slaughter, because we have no traffic control there. We have no uh crosswalks, we have no stoplights, and we have no Bradley project. So come back in two thousand thirty with the project where we have those existing things in place, and I think that it makes eminent sense to consider these. In addition, the previous remarks dovetail with my thoughts of we need less roadway and more sidewalk. To that extent, I would support a project in general, but not the one as currently proposed. Thank you, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ronan. Uh, next we'll hear from Kent Mason.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. My name is Kent Mason. Uh, my wife and I live at sixty-seven twelve Kenhill Road and have lived here for thirty-two years. Uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to testify, and and thank you for the modified proposal. Um, we remain, however, strongly opposed to the sidewalk po- uh project in Kenwood Park. We're opposed because, and this has really been discussed by others, there has been no study. In other words, these streets were not selected based on any study of pedestrian traffic, automobile traffic, any type of safety criteria. They were not selected on any sort of data-driven basis. And I think the best illustration of this is our street, Kenhill Road. Our street is a three-block street, and it is really not used by almost anybody except for the the people who live on the street, because it's not a through street in the sense that we have a through street that's one block away, Whittier Boulevard. People who want to sort of drive this this way, they use Whittier, they don't use Kenhill. So our, the the use of our street, either walking or or driving, is basically only for the people on that street. And, you know, I've been very surprised listening to others here today. My wife and I walk almost every single day. We walk with our three dogs. We walk thirty to forty minutes a day, and all these people talking about all the traffic and the the people in those thirty to forty minutes, we see maybe four or five people. We see maybe four or five cars. And to put sidewalks justified by four or five people, four or five cars in forty minutes? I mean, that's really a waste. It's inappropriate. It's bad planning. I would urge you, I invite everybody, everybody making this decision, come to our street any time of the day or night. Come to our street, spend ten minutes, spend thirty minutes. You will see virtually no cars. You will see virtually no people. And for that, we're disrupting our neighborhood. We're jeopardizing over a hundred trees, because even though with the new proposal, I think as Lauren was saying, that new proposal could jet, could jeopardize over a hundred trees. So there is no basis for this, but the street selected. I'm pro-safety. I'm pro-safety. Spend the money where you can actually make an impact. Our street, all the the other, a lot of the other streets chosen, there is no basis for it.
That's fine, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll hear from Misha Adam and T D.
I already spoke. I apologize for multiple times. Sorry about that.
I'm so sorry. Um. Okay, next we'll hear from Susan Wurtheim. Susan Wurtheim? Okay, Joanne Harrison? Joanne Harrison? David Stone?
Hi, my name is David Stone. I live in Kenwood Park with my wife and our three children, ages twelve, nine, and five. I have been a resident and homeowner in Kenwood Park since two thousand eighteen. I oppose the Kenwood sidewalk proposal. I support the concerns and adopt the testimony of other residents testifying and submitting written comments opposing the proposal and raising issues about environmental and climate change impacts, loss of trees, destruction of neighborhood quality of life, increase impervious concrete services promoting added storm run- water runoff, and the generation of environmental temperature increases. For starters, the county is in violation of procedural and administrative due process and notice requirements. Reference is hereby made to that certain letter from the Department of Transportation dated January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, wherein the county designated Kenwood Park for a proposed sidewalk installation project. Pursuant to the sidewalk proposal, the county had provided forty-three days prior written notice to this virtual public hearing so that the citizens of Kenwood Park had an opportunity to analyze and review the sidewalk proposal and its enclosures, including without limitation, the county arborist tree report dated as of August twenty-seven, twenty twenty. Unfortunately, today, on the same day as the scheduled virtual public hearing, the Department of Public Transportation published a completely new updated tree report dated February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, a copy of which can now be found on the Department of Transportation's website. The issuance of such new tree report on the eve of this virtual hearing is an outrageous violation by the county of procedural and administrative due process and notice requirements required pursuant to the Montgomery County Code. The Kenwood Park community and its citizens have had no opportunity to review this new tree report for comment prior to this virtual hearing that was scheduled less than twenty-four hours after the issuance of this new tree report. Accordingly, we, I demand that the county immediately adjourn this virtual hearing, complete all necessary studies of the affected trees in Kenwood Park, including without limitation, all air excavation examinations required to update the tree report with a comprehensive and detailed final and binding analysis of which trees will actually be removed. Three, reissue a new sidewalk proposal to everyone in Kenwood Park with all new supporting information, including an updated and final tree report. Four, schedule a new hearing, both in-person and virtual, for such date that is at least forty-three days after the date of such new sidewalk proposal has been mailed to all Kenwood Park residents. Secondly, the Kenwood Park Citizens Association is not an HOA. Unfortunately, the county and officials of the Department of Transportation have incorrectly concluded that the Kenwood Park Citizens Association, also known as the KPCA, is an HOA. That is categorically false. The KPCA is a voluntary organization, but there are no covenants or declarations that are binding on any of the homeowners here in Kenwood Park. The KPCA does not speak for me and has no authority to promulgate rules, regulations, or other obligations on any.
Time. That's time. Thank you, David. Okay, next we'll hear from Jody Stone.
Good evening. My name is Jody Stone, and I strongly oppose the current sidewalk proposal. What I am for is having safer streets in our neighborhood and keeping the beautiful trees that are a vital and precious component of the character of our neighborhood. While this current proposal tried to divide neighbors in having to choose between either sidewalks or trees, that choice does not actually need to be made. With adequate time and resources spent, we would be able to have proper traffic studies and further research into the possible variety of viable options to truly create safer streets and preserve the trees. The current proposal is a quick fix without any proper due diligence required and is not actually solving any problems of safety. This county is simply sticking a Band-Aid on the issue and rushing to pass this through. The current placement of the proposed sidewalk provides a false sense of safety and may end up actually producing more harmful outcomes than good ones. I sincerely hope the county listens to the overwhelming majority of Kenwood Park residents who are expressing that we absolutely oppose this current proposal. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jody. Uh, next we'll hear from Michael Tilchin.
Hello, uh, my name is Mike Tilchin. I live at six-nine-one-six Millwood Road on the side of Millwood Road that would get a sidewalk. I am a licensed professional engineer, uh, an active member of the American Society of Civil Engineers, a member of A S C E's Policy and Practice Committee, and the Committee on America's Infrastructure. That's the group that prepares the nation's infrastructure report card. I am opposed to the Kenwood Park sidewalk plan. I care a great deal about pedestrian safety. Protection of human life takes precedence over everything. I believe the potential safety benefits of sidewalks in our neighborhood is very limited, truly negligible, and the sidewalk proposal is remarkable in its destructiveness. The absence of community engagement during the development of the Kenwood Park plan was also very disturbing. Several of us have been involved in gathering feedback from our community. We have reached out to survey homes on every street directly impacted by the sidewalk proposal, expecting and welcoming a wide range of views. Eighty-two percent of the one hundred and sixty-eight residents who responded to our survey are opposed to the sidewalk plan. In that group, half are opposed to construction of any sidewalks, and half are opposed to the plan, but open to considering alternatives that increase pedestrian safety while preserving trees. In addition to the survey, one hundred and thirty-three residents signed a petition in opposition to the sidewalk plan. There are many effective approaches to ensuring protect pedestrian safety and preserving trees. These are commonly used in nearby jurisdictions and in neighboring states. None of these approaches were considered. Our neighborhood has prepared a memo of alternative approaches. We strongly urge you to shelve your plan and start there. We do appreciate you are finally looking at a way to kill fewer trees, but it seems that many trees are still at risks. but it seems that many trees are still at risks. Our trees are no are by no means out of the woods. You have told us the sidewalk program does not coordinate with the traffic program. That seems crazy. And it leads to poor project selection and bad design, both of which apply here. We are very fortunate to live in a community where we have a very high level of pedestrian safety and a large number of mature and beautiful trees. We have twenty-six-foot-wide streets, light traffic, and very little demand for street parking. An informal count on Millwood Road shows less than five percent of street parking is used. So thinking about wide streets, light traffic, and a huge surplus of street parking, I'm reminded of a favorite song from nineteen sixty-eight. Why don't we do it in the road? Limit parking to one side of the street. We will still have way more parking than we need. Create a pedestrian walkway in the existing road with proper road signs.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Okay, next we'll hear from Francis Chivari.
Hi, this is Fran Chivari, and I live at fifty-eight sixty Barbary Road, and I just want to thank everyone for all this input into the sidewalk proposal discussions. I just want to give a little background. When we moved to Kenwood Park nineteen years ago, I really liked the Kenwood Park neighborhood feel resulting from its design without sidewalks and with its canopies of flowering cherry trees similar to the Kenwood neighborhood, which is just down river road. It was explained to me that the beautiful canopy of flowering double cherry trees are quansing trees in Kenwood Park whereby designed to differentiate Kenwood Park from Kenwood that has flowering single cherry trees that are on the tidal basin. Whatever the sidewalk plans turn out to be, I think it is important for Kenwood Park to continue to support the canopies of flowering double cherry trees, quansing trees that has always been part of the Kenwood Park design, but these are not on the list of trees that we got from the county. Now, before finalizing sidewalk plans, I would like Kenwood Park to consider ways to prevent, reduce Kenwood Park cut-through traffic and ways to reduce traffic speed using residential traffic calming techniques. If Kenwood Park were able to better prevent, reduce cut-through traffic and also reduce traffic speed, then this may help inform a better decision about the necessity and placement of sidewalks in Kenwood Park. And I noticed that Kenwood has a which also is does not have sidewalks, has a number of traffic signs, I assume, that are for preventing and reducing cut-through traffic. I don't have contacts in Kenwood, but it might be worthwhile to check with Kenwood on how effective they have been in reducing their traffic speed and in preventing reducing cut-through traffic with their traffic signs and to learn the process they use for doing this. This would help inform Kenwood Park if Kenwood Park would want to do this before finalizing sidewalk plans. So at this point, I am against the plans. I think there needs to be more study before we finalize any plans. Thank you very much for letting me talk.
Thank you, Fran. Uh, next we'll hear from Christina Schreiber.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christina Schreiber. My address is six four one six Ken Howe Drive, and I want to express my strong support for the sidewalks. Uh, per the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, the single most effective way to improve patient safety is the installation of sidewalks. As a family medicine physician, I spend my days discussing preventative medicine, advising patients to take steps to enhance their safety and health. Keeping pedestrians out of the road and on a sidewalk improves safety. It's much safer if you fall on a sidewalk as opposed to falling in a street in the middle of oncoming traffic. Kids fall off their bikes all the time, and falling off your bike on a sidewalk gives you the opportunity to dust yourself up off and get back up again. These days, there's more drivers on the road, and the drivers are more distracted than ever. Times are different than they were five years ago, ten years ago, fifteen, twenty years ago. So we need to think about those things when it comes to sidewalks. On Ken Howe, we recently just had sidewalks installed in the spring of last year. The workers were very respectful of others' property. They worked quickly, and they also helped some neighbors relocate shrubs. We have been using the sidewalks on a regular basis, and we are benefiting from the safety that they provide. My husband John also wants to say a few things.
Yeah, I'll I'll be quick. I'm a pediatric neurologist at Children's National. Um, we really have enjoyed having the sidewalks. I also have unfortunately seen the other side of it. I've seen traumatic brain injury from kids uh crushed from a car, and these are often going at low speeds. Uh, depending on the study you look at, over half of pedestrian deaths uh for kids are related to uh being struck by a motor vehicle going less than twenty miles per hour. So speed is not a requirement for a serious injury. This is not a hypothetical. We see this all the time, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, next we'll hear from Walda Catfishman. Walda?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, I am here, and I just want, I am at six six one seven Millwood Road, Bethesda, and I've lived in the neighborhood for fifty years. And I want to add my voice to those of us who are opposed to the sidewalk proposal and who think that other um solutions such as parking on one side of the street, perhaps even putting in a walk bicycle other lane, you know, down the road, given that cars would only be on one side, would be a way to really protect those of us who walk and are in the streets. I walk about three miles a day, know the neighborhood, and the loss of trees and green space, which is important to health and well-being mentally and physically uh would be lost. So just to say, I think there are better ways to ensure the safety of our community, and I oppose this particular proposal, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Alda. Uh, next we'll hear from Jack Barrett.
This is Jack Barrett. I live, excuse me, I seem to have an echo here. Um. I live at seven thousand Millwood Road, uh, right in the middle of the proposal area. I will try to be very brief. I am strongly opposed to the proposal for the reasons many have expressed in hearing this um very heartfelt and careful discussion. My own views are crystallizing quite a bit. My objection are that this proposal hasn't been developed with an eye on the best interest of this neighborhood and of the public. I am completely in favor of safety uh and street safety. A proposal to put a few sidewalks on some streets doesn't fully serve that in the way that uh can be served by slowing traffic, in my view. I appreciate the view that slowing traffic isn't always enough, but I think we have alternatives here that would work. The neighborhood has developed a memo that Mike Tilchin talked about involving things like bump outs, which might help us avoid the cut-through traffic and provide protection for our streets. So the real objection I have here is heavily a process objection that we haven't thought through exactly what we need for this neighborhood to accomplish what we need to accomplish, and we haven't even developed the data to know what we need to accomplish. And we do need to accomplish it with an eye on all our broader community concerns, including the the tree canopy. Um, I know that one of the sidewalk proposals, I understand, had forty-seven trees removed and only three were replaced. And the Forest Service Calculator also confirms that small seedlings are not sufficient to replace old mature trees. So in thinking through all of this, I join those who strongly oppose the proposal. I appreciate the concerns of those who are worried about safety, and I think it's not an either or. We can have our aesthetic neighborhood and our safety. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Maine, Mr. Barrios, and others for your kindness and courtesy in talking through this with us all um during the during the preparation for this hearing.
Thank you. Uh, okay, next we'll hear from Claudia Short.
Thank you. Um, I also am joining this call to oppose the proposal as currently articulated. I also want to underscore the comments from my neighbors um about the untimeliness of the update to the proposal that was released yesterday or today. Uh, and with having this hearing um this evening and without postponing it, I concur with the recommendation and actually the demand to um in institute the timeframe required for the neighborhood neighbors and the community at large to review the new proposal, understand it, and then have the opportunity to have a hearing uh and text time for testimony and for submitting comments. There are many people who have joined this call tonight who have significant expertise, either as um environmental experts, um as engineers, as attorneys. We have a wealth of of um of uh um folks in the neighborhood who can look at this issue and have looked at this issue, but not all of us have the capacity and the time given our own demands on our daily lives to devote resources just on a twenty-four-hour notice to understand a new proposal from the county. I fear that this proposal is a bit of a red herring. The 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 trees that are slated to be um have their roots visible through air ration or whatever the right proper term is for that, uh which I have not even had a time to digest um and understand and research um really gives me no confidence that those trees will not be slated for removal in the end. Um, I also am interested in the county providing more information on non-concrete options for pavement um instead of the concrete options. But again, I look at other um as a as a non-expert in environmental issues. I look at other um places where the community at large has used other materials like high school turfs for soccer fields and other places um that have created more problems than they are worth um when removing grass um and other natural resources. So I think that while that might be environmentally a sound option, uh, those of us who are not steeped in in uh this deserve time to read and learn about what the proposal would actually be for alternative materials um that could affect the the heat. Um, you know, the nature of how heat is felt um on our streets right in front of our houses. I also am significantly disturbed by the comments of um individuals who who support the proposal but do are not living on effective streets and invoking the name of child who was killed um right in front of our house at sixty-eight hundred Millwood Road. I concur with the comments um that note that the bus stop
Time. That's time. Thank you, Claudia. Thank you. Uh, okay, Mark Tanawit.
Hi, thank you for the time, and to continue Claudia's very important point. Uh, I am I'm deeply opposed and bothered by the proposal for the sidewalks. And to those neighbors uh invoking the name of the child that was that was killed, it's important to note that that was not a sidewalk safety issue. There was a child chasing after a bus, and it was terrible. However, while we all, I think, support safety in our neighborhood, the current plan is not based on data and analysis, and therefore we can't trust that the current plan will yield those results. I'm also quite disturbed by the notion that biker safety will increase or improve because of these sidewalks, and I'm deeply troubled by the number of people that have spoken about letting your children bike on the sidewalks. And I think about the seventeen-year-old that was killed on Old Georgetown Road because he was riding on the sidewalk and went flying off. The sidewalk is not a place for wheeled vehicles. So for a number of reasons, I think we have a lot of research to do, a lot of understanding to develop um in order to come up with a plan that truly improves safety, and this is not the plan for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, next we'll hear from Maria De Rick.
Maria. Yes, this is Maria's husband, Rodrigo Garcia Verdugo.
Hi, yes.
We have two young daughters, ages eight and three and a half. We are obviously concerned about safety, but we don't think that this uh plan as proposed is addressing the issue of safety. Uh, we concur with the previous comments that oppose the project for three main reasons. Lack of due process, lack of planning, including the environmental impacts of the uh project. And also a lack of sensible alternatives. So I think we are being presented with a false um trade-off between having sidewalks, safety with environmental impact or no sidewalks with the current status quo, both in terms of safety and keeping our trees. Where what we could have is both, as Mr. Tilchin clearly explained. The streets are wide enough to accommodate a sidewalk uh without the need to turn uh to 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 chop the trees and to disrupt also uh some of the driveways. So in our case, our driveway is very steep, and if we cut on the um sidewalk, it would be uh even steeper to the point of becoming maybe not usable anymore. So we think that uh we're being presented with uh uh an alternative that uh is nonsensible. Uh, several of the neighbors have spoken about um better plans, and uh again, the roads are wide enough that could accommodate uh with with um sensible planning, uh including allowing parking only on one side um to to uh allow both the sidewalk and the preservation of the trees. So thank you very much for the opportunity to to speak, and again, we're uh strongly opposed to the project as planned.
Okay, thank you so much, Rodrigo. Um, next we'll hear from David Hoss.
This is Dave Hottis. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, my name is Dave Hottis, and my wife Anne and I have lived at seven thousand eight Kenhill Road for eighteen years, and we oppose the proposed project. Uh, we want the body to understand that we've been reading the community newsletters throughout our tenure living here and knew nothing about any sidewalk project. Whoever contacted the county on behalf of the presumably on behalf, this is all upon information and belief, uh on behalf of the KPCA had neither the authority to do so nor the consent of a majority of the community homeowners. A request was made of the KPCA, the Community Association, to undertake a legitimate poll of the homeowners on this issue. That request was denied with the committee stating that it would, quote, "take no position," end quote, on the matter. Our view is that by taking no position, they are tacitly approving the project. Hence, there's been no democratic process here to determine the collective intent of the community. Uh, my written remarks, we're going to go through the reasons why we oppose, but instead of reading them, I just want to adopt the comments of a prior commenter, Leonard Bebchik, and some of my notes here that resonated with me that there no, there's been no study. Uh, there there needs further development to understand what the community actually wants, and so notably, it's a process objection. And then finally, I want to adopt completely the the prior speaker who also lives on Kenhill Road, who asked anyone to come. If you would come and spend a half hour in my front yard on my swing, you would appreciate the folly, the absolute folly of putting a sidewalk in in the block of Kenhill between Durbin uh pardon me, Durbin and Lennox Road. And lastly, I want everyone to celebrate how engaged and well-educated our community is. We are very thankful to live in Kenwood Park. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, David. Next we'll hear from Richard Bernie.
Hello. We live on sixty-eight eighteen Millwood Road. Uh, we've been here almost fifty years. We live on 6818 Millwood Road. We've been here almost 50 years, so we've seen all kinds of changes. We're opposed to the proposal as it stands. Two points to make. First, I was president of the Kenwood Park Citizens Association for eight years. And I can tell you, it is a purely voluntary association. In fact, it requires a $39 whatever you call it, to become a member and not more than a third of Kenwood Park are members. So it really represents nothing in terms of Kenwood Park's view on anything. So it's a good thing that they're neutral. Second, I don't know if any of you have seen the maps recently, but there's something called the Minnehaha Stream that runs between Millwood and Ken Hill Road. It's been covered, it's been covered over by a covert, but it's still there and it gets a lot of water. And especially when really heavy rains. In fact, my house and several others along Millwood Road have been designated by the county as not drainage, flood areas. And the proposal as it exists has all the way along that Minnehaha River, two five-foot wide cement walkways, which are going to increase the amount of water that comes into the Minnehaha Basin, which since it's a it is totally insane to increase the amount of water that's coming into a flood basin. So it makes no sense whatsoever. Couple of other comments while I have time. The child who unfortunately sadly lost their life a few years back on Millwood Road was chasing a bus and got caught in the door of the bus. So it really is very sad, but whether there was a sidewalk there or not would have made absolutely no difference. Also, you know, the county doesn't seem to be very interested in actually preserving our safety because they took a speed bump off, or someone took a speed bump off Millwood Road about a year ago because there was construction work and they still haven't put it back. So we sort of wonder what is the issue on safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Did Carolyn want to speak as well?
Excuse me, she is opposed to the system as it is, but she's went away, got bored with the whole thing. Sorry.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Richard. Okay, next Michael Harrison. Michael Harrison. Joel Lesch.
Hi, this is Joel Lesch. I'm at 5824 Durbin. And to start, I'm against the current plan. I'll just touch on a few points quickly. First, we've been residents here for approximately 30 years. We regularly walk in the neighborhood. Our kids walked to both Pyle and Whitman. So we spend a fair amount of time walking out on these streets without sidewalks and never felt safety-related issues. To that point, there's been no traffic study. There's been no pedestrian safety study. There's been no evaluation of other alternatives that have been elaborated by numerous speakers, including use of traffic calming measures, using some street space for sidewalks or even things as simple as stop signs at some of the places where people perceive traffic to be moving too fast. As was pointed out, there was no survey of affected residents until after this decision to put the sidewalks in was made. Apparently it was requested by KPCA, which is Mr. Bernie described was not a representative governmental body for the residents of Kenwood Park. Finally, there's been no evidence presented that this will actually increase walking or decrease auto use and achieve any climate goals that the county has put forth. Finally, as others have mentioned, we received the new proposal just the other night. I've only had a chance to briefly look at it. But I've certainly noted that it would appear that it would put the sidewalks closer to people's property, which reduces the feeling of privacy in one's home. To the extent there are people such as myself that use their driveway for off-street parking, it puts kids and individuals closer to parked cars, which unfortunately occasionally leads to mischief. Certainly, I know from cars that are left in the street, they're frequently our targets of dogs wanting to urinate on them. And I'm not looking forward to having that if cars or the sidewalk is close, closer to the house and where I park. The report indicates that quite a number of trees will be evaluated by air excavation. Yet to see anything that suggests that air excavation actually guarantees a tree will be saved or that it so life won't be significantly compromised. Those are the main points. I also adopt quite a number of the points that others have raised in opposition to.
That's time. Thank you, Joel. Okay, next is Krishna Kali. Krishna Kali. Donna Truitt. Donna Truitt. Diana Huffman. Lindsay Baynard. Lindsay Baynard. Mandana Tabakoli.
Good evening, everyone. I thank, I want to thank everyone at Montgomery County for this opportunity to speak. And I also want to thank the community for being here and present and for all of those before me that have stated all the facts as to why the sidewalks should not be put in our community. I live in the middle of Durbin Road, 5816 Durbin Road. We haven't lived here for 15, 30 years as a lot of other people have. But one of the reasons we chose this community was because of the white streets that are in the neighborhood. I do have two younger children. My son often walks to Landon School with his friends and I have a daughter who is a walker and walks the neighborhood on daily basis. And I never ever felt more safe than any other neighborhood that I have felt with for her to be by herself walking around. And I am 100% pro-safety, but I am not quite sure if the proposed sidewalks will bring safety to the neighborhood as presented. I am a walker myself. I do walk the neighborhood on daily basis, at least 30 to 30 minutes to an hour on daily basis. I do see kids on bikes. I cannot say I see kids on bikes on the sidewalks as many more times that I see them riding their bikes on the street with their parents. And I'm a little concerned and disturbed by my neighbors that are not affected, that do not live on the streets, that are going to get the sidewalks or for this. I respect your opinion, but I'm just a little disturbed. And I do appreciate living in the community that everyone's so educated and has done so much research when it comes to this topic. Thanks, everyone, and I appreciate my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Lindsay Baynard. Lindsay Baynard.
There we go. Now I can talk. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lindsay Baynard and I live on Plainview Road. My family and I have lived here for 11 years and we walk every day in the neighborhood and strongly support protected pedestrian walkways in Kenwood Park. All across the DMV, we have seen the increase in pedestrian deaths. We do not want that to happen in our neighborhood. Many speak of when their children walked to the schools over 15 or 20 years ago, a time when life was simpler, no cell phones, no Waze app, sending cars into our neighborhood to cut through because of standstill traffic on River Road, Goldsboro or Bradley Boulevard, as well as the increase with distracted driving. Providing safe passage with sidewalks on Durbin, Millwood and the other proposed streets will also increase the amount of kids who can walk to school. And we regret the loss of any tree. We love cherry trees and oaks as much as the next person and appreciate what they do. But this is where it gets very personal for our family of six and two dogs. We are parents to four children, 12, 10, 5, and 1, three boys and a little girl. Our oldest son Owen has epilepsy. And if you're not familiar with epilepsy, a seizure can strike at any moment. Grandma seizures where he is totally and completely out of it, you are to make sure he's in a safe place, turned on his side and allowed to shake until it stops. Owen looks like any growing young boy and does most things that boys his age do, including play basketball and hang out with his friends. But he is at a special risk walking on the roads in Kenwood Park to his friend's house on Millwood or Marbury or anywhere else, including the house, the road up the street. As you just heard from Dr. John Schreiber and Dr. Christina Schreiber, who testified about why they supported sidewalks in their neighborhood. Doc, Dr. Shreiber, John Schreiber was at Children's the day Owen was admitted and he was there to tell me Owen's prognosis and continues to watch Owen grow up to this day. And I'm going to quote from his testimony from last year, quote, "I'm a child neurologist at Children's National and associate professor of neurology and pediatric at George Washington. And I think what's important to also stress here is the real effects that these injuries can have on people. I see the effects on kids. It's these kind of injuries can be devastating to kids and to families. And this notion that speeding is required to have a significant injury and the things that I see are traumatic brain injuries. But the notion that speeding or high speed is required to sustain a significant traumatic traumatic brain injury is just, it's just incorrect. I've seen kids all too many times who have been bleeding, who have been struck by a motor vehicle, even at low speeds. And you have significant contusions, bleeding, strokes, brain injuries that leave them with disability for the rest of their lives. And so this concept that speed is a necessary component of injury is just, it's just incorrect, end quote. And so for our son and for our small children, having a sidewalk to walk on is critical. And we have been touched by other roadside tragedies. Our third son Holden is named after Tim Holden, our very good friend who was tragically taken from us on his bike at the top of the hill on Mass Avenue in 2015. So in conclusion, my family and I support this proposal. We think that these considerations should be balanced in any decision to move forward with this proposal. But we sincerely hope for the citizens of Kenwood Park, the human beings that are your friends, your neighbors, your loved ones are placed above the need of everything else. And that is put sidewalks in for safety reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Did Owen wish to speak as well?
He just got home from basketball and has to go to bed soon, but.
Okay, thank you.
I want sidewalks because it's dangerous walking on the roads. And even with when I'm with my parents, it's people drive by us at high speeds and we've almost gotten hit. And I just want sidewalks because then I can walk to my friend's house and to the playground with my brothers and sister.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We really appreciate the ability to talk and have everyone weigh in.
Thank you, Lindsay and Owen. Okay, next we'll hear from Christina Kaufman.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for hosting this meeting. I am here today to just express my strong support of this proposal. And I think that it's a really good positive thing for our neighborhood. As a parent of young children, I believe that our lack of sidewalks is a huge safety issue. We have Walt Whitman at the heart of our neighborhood and we have many drivers coming in and out of the neighborhood all year round. And many of these drivers are new and inexperienced and not to mention easily distracted by cellular devices. Pedestrians would be much safer on sidewalks and out of the street. And I think that is just a fact that can't really be argued against. I know it's not everyone's cup of tea and there are a lot of people who are very against it, but I'm very much for this, for this proposal. I think it's a great community builder as well. And it fosters a lot of relationships and community bonds by making the outdoors more inviting and accessible to many more. So I hope that the county, the committee presses forth with this proposal and installs new sidewalks. I also support expanding more sidewalks in this neighborhood. I think it's a positive thing. And I think there is a lot of community support for this proposal as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Okay, next we'll hear from Chetan Mehta.
Yes, hi, this is Chetan Mehta. I am the owner of 5900 Durbin Road. I am moving my family from Manhattan, New York City to Bethesda, specifically to give our two young sons ages four and seven room to play, which candidly they cannot do here in Manhattan. And so as a parent of a four-year-old and seven-year-old, I'm in favor of more sidewalks in Kenwood Park. However, I'm against the proposal as currently drafted and I share others' view that the current proposal doesn't appear to be developed based on data, at least certainly ones that have not been shared with me. I would like to see the background, how conclusions were reached that these streets and the sides of those streets are the best and appropriate locations for sidewalks. Further, it seems like this proposal should be shelved until the master plan that others have discussed is presented. As noted, I'm in favor of adding sidewalks in the community, but I would like to see two amendments to the current plan in an effort to maximize the lawn and green space in the community. First, I would prefer that the county reclaim some of the very wide road areas for the sidewalks, which I know some others have mentioned on this call. Second, I would like the county to consider narrower sidewalks than the five-foot width that is proposed. Having gone through the home construction permitting process with Montgomery County very recently, I can say that there is intense focus by Montgomery County on rainwater runoff because of overloading of the rainwater management system in the area. Yet reducing the lawn area or green space area seems to run counter to the county's own views. The sidewalks on Radnor Road and Woodyer Boulevard are narrower than the proposed five feet, but seem to be just as effective. Therefore, I'd like the county to consider these two amendments to its plan when they ultimately decide that sidewalks are are the right answer here. In conclusion, I'd like to see this proposal shelved and the county undertake a data-driven analysis, where best to install sidewalks in Kenwood Park and consider reclaiming some of the wide roadways when sidewalks are ultimately installed. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll hear from Lindsay Mackler.
Hi, I am Lindsay Mackler. I live at 6116 Durbin Road with my husband and my two young boys, six and three. We've lived here for almost seven years and we love this community. And we feel extremely safe here. We play outside all the time. We ride bikes, ride scooters in the neighborhood. We are extremely opposed to the sidewalk proposal. The safety of our community and our children is and should be the utmost priority, but the current plan in place just does not make sense. And sidewalks, like others have said, are not the only solution to safety. So before we haphazardly start ripping up front lawns and destroying the whole character of Kenwood Park as other people have addressed, there's other things we could address, more speed bumps, more stop signs. Currently, there's only one right now on Durbin Road between Bradley and Hopewood. We could also post a speed limit sign. There's actually none currently. Speed cameras, if you will, there's just so many other options here. I know people have spoken about this already. This design in general just lacks necessary attention to details. I support a sidewalk where it is essentially necessary on busy streets to help keep everyone safe. But the sidewalk on Durbin Road specifically, I do not think it makes logical sense, especially on Durbin Road between Hopewood and Ken Hill, which is where I live. I play outside. You can see me outside with my two boys every single day. This block is not heavily traveled by pedestrians as other streets. The grade is very steep and it has a sharp curve. And most pedestrians travel on Lennox or Plainview, which goes straight to Woodyer Boulevard. And most pedestrians travel on Lenox or Plainview, which goes straight to Whittier Boulevard. Our street here, dead ends at Hopewood Street. So this sidewalk plan that you actually look at the map, it's a sidewalk to nowhere. It literally stops at the top of Hopewood Street. So if you are walking on a sidewalk, you actually just have to spill out onto the street. It just doesn't make sense. I've come together with other residents in our particular block. We have all signed a petition letter and sent it to you guys for all of these exact reasons. Also, no one's even brought this up, like sidewalks also add a false sense of security. I don't know if you have thought about this. But the short length of driveways, specifically with the newer built homes, everyone has multiple cars parked in their driveways, oversized SUVs that would probably block some of the sidewalk the way you currently have it designed. And it's a pedestrian hazard as cars are backing up out of the driveways. I'm interested to explore ideas as other people had suggested. These streets are wide. It would make sense to look into maybe narrowing the street a little bit and putting sidewalk there. That would maybe be a solution here. But in conclusion, we are totally against this project the way it stands right now. There needs to be more time, more studies. This project should be suspended until more studies are conducted and alternatives are considered. And honestly, we expect our elected officials at the end of the day to be really responsible stewards of our tax dollars and really conduct reasonable due diligence. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next we'll hear from Fernandez.
I was given a chance to speak previously, so I don't want to take anybody else's time. I would just like to add one thing, because I did was under my three minutes before, is that just last year, year and a half, the WSSCD Water Management Commission had issued a report of replacing all the piping in certain areas of Hyborough, Ken Hill. That was going to be disruptive of the area. They actually were sending this notice of removing one of the trees. If this is a project that is still going to be addressed in the future, it doesn't make again sense of using the dollars of the county and our tax dollars to build the sidewalk that will then have to be upended by the services. Again, it's uncoordinated. It's been mentioned before, uncoordinated with the traffic department narrowing of the streets. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll hear from Rob Short.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Actually, I wasn't going to speak, but I, when Sophia Chen was mentioned, it really got me thinking. Sophia Chen is the name of the little girl who was killed in the accident with the bus in 2019. And it's not surprising to me that that Sophia should come up in this context. I mean, we're talking about important safety issues and it was a horrifying thing that happened in our neighborhood. I mean, it's still something that we think about pretty frequently. But if you look at this plan, Sophia Chen was killed on the wrong side of the street. And, you know, you can quibble about whether a sidewalk would have made a difference in what happened to her, but this just illustrates how little thought seems to have gone into where the sidewalks would go in this neighborhood. We have heard about Ken Hill and how lightly trafficked that is. This, the Sophia Chen issue, I don't know why there is a stretch of sidewalk planned in between Tanglewood leading all the way down to Goldsboro Road where there is heavy traffic and no sidewalk. Nobody is walking down Millwood Road to get to Goldsboro. So I think when people talk about studies, it sounds a little abstract. It sounds like something that could take time and what can you learn by studies? I think just exercising a little judgment about where you are going to plan to put these sidewalks would go a long way, because I think the problem that a lot of us are having is that they seem to have been chosen almost arbitrarily. I hear a lot of support for sidewalks on other people's streets at this meeting. In fact, it may even be a majority of the support for sidewalks come from people who don't live on the streets where the sidewalks are planned. And, you know, it may sound like a good idea in the abstract, but it's not an abstraction for us. So I hope that you will go back to the drawing board and just give a little bit of thought to what it is that you think you are doing, what you are trying to accomplish. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Rob. Okay. Richard?
Okay, good evening. That concludes the speakers who expressed any interest in speaking tonight. If there's anyone else who has not signed up to testify who wishes to speak, please click the reaction icon and then raise your hand or dial star nine when you keep it. Any additions? I think we have one hand.
I would like to speak.
Okay. Mr. Sullivan.
Hi. My wife and I live at 6804 Millwood Road. And we're right across the street from the location where the little girl was killed by the bus. We support putting sidewalks in not just on our side of Millwood Road, but on both sides of Millwood Road and on both sides of all of the streets in our neighborhood. We need sidewalks. We need sidewalks to separate people from cars. Very simple. People are more important than trees. Yes, we should protect trees to the extent we can. But we should protect people even more importantly. And we should ensure that we don't overburden the environment by putting in solid concrete sidewalks to the extent that we can put in permeable pavement sidewalks. And we should put in sidewalks everywhere in the entire Kenwood Park community. Because we have a lot of people who use sidewalks, who use this street to walk, who are endangered by our streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Okay, Irina Booth.
Hi, this is Irina Booth. I live at 7228 Millwood. We've lived here since 1984. And as a side note, my husband grew up on Bright Drive, which is adjacent to the neighborhood and he was born there in 1956. So we're well aware of all the ins and outs of this neighborhood. In your stated purpose for the sidewalks, you mentioned schools. What I don't see in this plan is a way for Whitman and Pyle Kids to walk into our neighborhood. There are two crosswalks on Robinwood and on Plainview, yet you have no sidewalks leaving from Whittier Boulevard, going up Plainview and going up Robinwood. So what you're asking the children to do is to cross over from a road that has a sidewalk and then walk up with no sidewalks till you get to our sidewalk at the top of Millwood and then they can go on a sidewalk. Whereas what happens at Whitman drop-off and pickup time is that lots of cars line up to pick up their children on both of Plainview and Robinwood. And so the streets are full of idling cars and the kids have to make their way any way they can up those two blocks. So what I see in your plan, as other people have said, is a lack of thinking about how people actually use these streets and where they're going to. So I suggest looking at the actual stated reasons for the sidewalks and remember that schools are the ones who provide the most pedestrians. I will not continue the discussion with all the other points that people have made, but I would like you to consider consider those two points. Thank you.
Thank you, Irina. Okay, that's. Constance Morella, did you wish to speak?
Well, briefly, thank you very much. I want to thank you for having this meeting. I appreciate it. I really tuned in because I wanted to listen and I wanted to learn. I wanted to learn what the reason was for this. And I must say, what the purpose was of the proposal and what the advantages were versus the disadvantages. I'm really not convinced. I'm thinking of safety. I'm thinking of the environment. And I think what the county needs to do is to listen, to look over the materials, to learn and then to lead. But I think this is a first step toward doing that, but I'm not totally convinced that the advantages outweigh the disadvantages. But thank you.
Thank you, Constance. Okay, Richard, that's.
Okay, so thank everyone for their testimony, seeing that everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity to do so. This concludes all testimony portion of the public hearing. We will now have a question and answer session. And just be mindful of the time, we have about 10 minutes for questioning and answering. And so those who wish to ask questions during this session, please click the reaction icon and then raise your hand or use your keypad on your telephone, star nine to ask your questions. And you also may type questions into the chat box. If we run out of time before all questions are answered, we will answer your questions via email in days to come.
Okay, first we'll hear from William Nagley.
Thank you for the opportunity to ask a question. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about narrowing roads. And I just want to ask the question, to be clear, I would not be opposed to that on Durbin. But if that is just actually within the realm of the possible, because I have heard discussion of this before and then I've heard because of the emergency passage or something about that as related to transiting Durbin, that that's just not actually in the realm of the possible. So you all may or may not be able to speak to that. I'm just curious if you have input on that.
I could speak for that. This forum is to hear and listen to all your concerns and questions and and narrowing roads is a consideration. At some locations, we do have to work with our traffic section to do an official study just to make sure it is conducive for that neighborhood. There are, somebody mentioned pros and cons. When you, one of the major cons of narrowing the road is it does increase the accident rate of side swipes. So it increases some types of, and those who try to park. So it's more of a major vehicular impact. So that decision would have to be made with our traffic section.
Okay, next we have a question from Lauren Saunders.
Thank you. At the beginning of the presentation, you put up a slide about the revised tree report that said that trees recommended for air excavation, quote, "will not be removed," unquote. But that's not how I read the tree report. Am I reading it wrong? Or can you guarantee us that the ones that say air excavation won't be removed?
I can answer that. What the air excavation X is for is to get a look at the roots from the tree. And if they see any roots that are two inches and above, the arborist will come back and look at it and determine if this is going to put any stress on the tree as far as viability. And also, is it going to put any stress on the tree as far as stability? So that's what the air excavation is for. We won't know the answer until we look at the, you know, what's been blown away by the the air excavation. And we usually go down about two to three inches, because when we excavate for sidewalk, we usually go four inches, but with this new material, we can we won't have to go that deep.
Okay, so the statement at the beginning was not accurate, it sounds.
I don't know. I was just telling you what we do with the air excavation to give us an idea on what roots are underneath. If everything is fine, yes, the tree will stay. It's up to the arborist, so I can't really say if it's going to be taken down or left there and, you know, evaluated for the next year.
Rick, I'd like, this is Bob Gonzalez. I wanted to also add that the other potential measures we can do to save the trees is we can realign the sidewalk away from the tree. We could curve it around. I think Lori had a picture of a sidewalk going around the tree. Yes, we can narrow the sidewalk less than five feet. We are actually required to build five-foot wide sidewalk for ADA, there are federal and state guidelines. But we are allowed to narrow it down to four if needed for a short period, but we would have to widen it back to five as soon as, you know, we pass the tree root zone. So there are construction techniques that we do use to prevent affecting the trees. So the air excavation, and just to confirm where the sensitive roots are to the trees.
Okay, next we have a question from Paula Wyman.
Hi, thank you. I'm following up on the air excavation. Because we just got that report yesterday, it was hard to digest all of it in time, obviously. It's hard for me to know whether you're really talking about air spading, which is what arborists would normally use to look at the roots of a tree to determine their health. Air excavation is normally used to help preserve buried utilities, not to help preserve trees. When the soil is sucked out of the ground through a pipe into a truck. So those are two different things and I'm curious whether we're actually talking about air spading here. My other question is, the other part of that is, there's still no indication of how the trees would actually be treated, how the roots would be pruned, how the soil that's removed would be replaced, whether the affected trees would be fertilized, because you're removing the soil that contains all the microbes and nutrients that they would normally need, whether a skilled arborist will do the actual pruning, because it just says he'll be notified. You know, what's the skill level of the person? Because there's a right way and a wrong way to prune roots. And what will happen if the trees are damaged in the process? That part you've already basically answered. So could you give me a little more information on that, please?
It is more like air spading. It is a, you know, they use a compressor with an air hose and they blow a a small trench on, you know, the limits of our excavation. It's usually about two inches wide, just so they can see what what roots are going to be running underneath the path of the sidewalk. So yeah, it is more air spading and it's all done by certified licensed arborists. And then the county arborist will be notified if any roots over a certain size are found and the county arborist will make his determination on what needs to be done based on what, you know, what is found with the air spading.
So the actual root pruning would be handled by an arborist?
Yeah, the licensed arborist that's doing the air spading. If he finds roots that are, you know, under a certain size, you know, he's licensed, so he can, he'll root prune them the proper way. Anything bigger than that. Anything bigger than that, because it's a county tree, the decision would be left up to the county arborist on how to move forward.
Okay, thanks for letting me know.
Okay, we have a question from Paula Wyman.
No, that was me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, great. David Stone.
Hi. When will the determination on the trees be made? After the project has been approved and the construction scheduled? Or why wouldn't you all send the arborist now do a comprehensive study of all the trees? And then reissue a new report rather than have the report that was just issued on the eve of this meeting? And secondly, does the county stipulate that the KPCA is not a HOA and representative body? Because the reason that's important is the Department of Transportation has said that when a homeowner or civic association requests sidewalk installation, it typically soon thereafter, it would soon, it would, it would, it would oblige the request. So could you speak to those two things? So we have clarity on what, what the timing of the tree assessments and also the county's view of the KPCA?
I, I could talk about this, Bob Gonzalez. You, you are actually experiencing a, a a change in dealing, working with our arborists. Prior to this, we had a previous project where our arborist basically went out and he had a straight line of a three foot green space, five foot, five foot sidewalk. And he just based his study or his report on that straight line. It was a laser line. We worked with him very recently and said, we want to have a report that was more reflective of of our potential of saving trees, our able, and that we are willing to, to shift the alignment of the sidewalk. We can narrow it. And he, we gave him some ideas of what we do during construction. So that is why you had that updated plan. And you could see that it is very positive if you, you, you know, for the trees and that we can save a good majority of them, of them. We can't guarantee just because it's air excavated on the report, that it's going to be saved, but we're going to really try very hard to do so. And, and the, the thing is.
But that's really an unfair thing because you're asking people to support the project before they have all the data. Why don't you do the data, do the testing, do the analysis, send it to the community and then draw a conclusion? Why get us to all go along with this process before you have all the facts? Nobody in their, in their right mind would do that if it was on their own property. They wouldn't just hire a contractor, come onto their property and start messing around with things. They would want to know the answers and you're just not able to give us any answers and you, you just keep punting. We want an answer.
Well, what we did was provided an updated report in regard to the trees. We are not going to air excavate or air spade these trees without committing to a project for, for, for the sidewalks. Our arborist is, is very effective. We worked for, with him for ten, fifteen years. And this, this is just a, a different thing. I, we could.
So nobody will know. So nobody will know what the outcome of the trees are before you make your final decision, is what you're saying?
Well, the, the result of his updated study shows that we could save about three quarters of his originally reported trees that were going to go down. So.
But that's not what you just said. You just said he wouldn't know until after they do the spading. This report doesn't conclusively say that those three quarters of the trees would be saved. The point I'm making, which you're unable to answer, and I understand why, is because you don't have the facts. And all we're asking for you and the county to do is investigate those facts and issue a new report and give us the same forty-three days to consider it. I don't think that's an unreasonable thing when you're coming into the community because you're not going to be here and the county won't be here to pick up the pieces afterwards. It will all be done. So why don't you guys just give us a new report, have your arborist come in and do it, you know, an exhaustive study? I don't think that's an unreasonable thing to ask. And I, and I think you guys have.
Thank you, David. But we are actually out of time. We did have a hard stop at nine fifteen and it is now nine eighteen. Richard?
So all right, seeing that we've answered all the questions that we are able to within the timeframe that we've been presented, we will conclude this hearing. We will keep the record open for four weeks. Comments and written testimonies are due by Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three at five PM. Additional written testimony and comments may be submitted by email and must be received or postmarked by the close of the hearing record. Submission should be sent to Lori Main, Sidewalk Program, Division of Transportation Engineering, one hundred Edison Park Drive, fourth floor, Gaithersburg, Maryland, two zero eight seven eight. Email address, laurie dot main at Montgomery County, M D dot gov. Again, Lori's contact information is also posted on the screen. Thank you for joining us this evening. This public hearing is now concluded. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And you can send your questions to me and I'll be happy to answer them. And I'll be also going through the chat to answer those questions as well. Thanks again. And have a wonderful, wonderful evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.